All right, good evening citizens and city council. I'll call the March fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of West Richland City Council to order at six P M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie if she'd please read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
Ken Stoker?
Here.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, council member Moran, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united one, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, council member Moran, appreciate that. Uh, council, the agenda is before you. Uh, councilman Bloom's asked to move item six E off the consent agenda and move it to eight A. So if you'll make note of that. Uh, with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, council this evening, council and audience, this evening we have, uh, Red Mountain Event Center has joined us and we're going to ask, uh, if we will have Eric Van Winkle, uh, from Red Mountain Event Center come and then give us a little presentation update. Uh, and then also might introduce team Red Mountain Event Center while they're they're here as well. Mr. Van Winkle, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, council, honored to be here. We'll start with this, thank you for the opportunity. Right, it's been, we're about halfway through our first five year agreement. We're going to give you a little state of the union and then, um, kind of give you some of our challenges and some of the, you know, successes out there. So, uh, again, we wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing, making noise out there without your support. So thank you very much. Um, yes, we are all project managers, it's a hundred percent volunteer. And so what in the front row here, I'm going to ask Lacey to come join me. This is Lacey Walden, her, her grandfather managed this track for years in the eighties, nineties. Uh, her father continues to be a part of racing in the area. She, I'm going to introduce her tonight to you, and she's not new to us, but she's doing all this work. She is the manager. We're all project managers, we all take on a little piece of it, but she's our lead dog and she has been for the last couple of years. I think you know me, I was part of the initial process with your team. But Lacey is working closely with Eric on a day to day basis, so Lacey Toller, welcome to the stage.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Um, she, I'm going to step away as this goes on, this won't take but a couple of minutes. But, um, just reminder that, uh, no taxpayer dollars have been spent there. Since you signed your agreement with us a little over two years ago, we have not spent a taxpayer dollar. That's our commitment to you and our opportunity at the same time. Um, it is all volunteer. It is an economic development sprinkler is my, my, my term, but it's a generator. This is like a calcium or an airport or a museum. It's not going to make you millions of dollars. It's going to generate millions of dollars for businesses that surround that and come to that. All right? Um, that's going quite well. If, uh, we're going to get to a Q and A at the end of this thing, feel free to ask us about that. Um, you don't always see all of the activity out there, and so we have a video together, Stephanie. Um, I would like to roll a video that's produced by Lacey Toller next to me. Um, and it's only a couple of minutes, but it's going to give you an idea what's going on out there, I'll step back, thanks.
It's not good to know the other racetracks I've been to all the country, so. This place, there's nothing else like it. Just feel like you're flying around here, so it just, it's way different. I don't even really know how to explain it.
This is a sports car club, they were with us, they were with you prior to us coming. And, um, we have continued that relationship, I think they have seven events, seven weekend events. The audio wasn't matched in the video, so I'm kind of helping you here.
And the video is lagging too.
Hey, so it's an odd shaped half mile. Why are we doing this? It's the fastest half mile in America. Okay, why? We could do, we could, we could do this elsewhere. There's only one tri-oval. It's, it's right out here, it's on your property. These guys come from Nashville, Phoenix. Where do they come from?
Las Vegas, Canada.
They, they come here, this isn't for beginners, this track is not built for the guy that races at Hermiston, we also run that track. Um, the mayor knows, this isn't for beginners, we don't allow that. This is for guys that have ten thousand laps. This is for guys with, guys, gals with ten thousand laps that we feel they're mature enough to take on this thing. But they come across the country because they want to tackle this thing. You've been out there on Sundays, on the weekends, it, it's crazy out there, but we're not just doing this because we love racing and this is our favorite track. This is a gem. So I, we can probably stop that down. The, the bottom line is, we're, we're doing this for a reason, is you got a gem out there. And I'll remind you, this is your track, this is your property. Our volunteers, these guys right here and hundreds of other them are using the passion of racing to go improve your asset. What does it cost you? Zero. We plead and beg for you to give us a chance, it's going well. We stand here, our state of the union is, we're a little bit ahead of where we thought we'd be. Good news, right, we're here, we're standing tall and we're willing to take the risk moving forward. We need you, just like you probably need us. I can tell you this, when, if we get into contract negotiations down the road, I'll tell you, there's nobody else that can do what we're doing, there's no question about that, but it makes a good marriage. All right? We're really excited, if you can't tell, we're excited about what we're doing. Beautiful. All right, we're early in the process, right? We signed originally two five-year leases. We're about halfway through the first five. And it's, uh, we are, we, we're excited because we're, we're getting opportunities in August. NASCAR has come to us, not us, we weren't ready to do this, and said, would you host one of the premier NASCAR events? August tenth, Arca's Racing at your racetrack. Right, we've got some homework to do, we're going to Phoenix, we've got to figure out how to, to make sure that our hospitality is at their level. We've got to go figure out what it takes to, you know, to, to invite them into your city and make this thing happen. But we're super excited to do that. Um, it still needs everything. We're not set up for night racing. We don't have audio that we need, we don't have all the parking we need, we don't have all the stuff. But I hope that you saw at least one image of what that track looks like when the stands are full with five thousand people and there's two or three hundred R Vs around the parking lot and every restaurant in your town is busy and we're selling hotels out in Richland and we're getting hotel motel tax because of that. Right, we're getting support from those groups. They see that, the, the hotel motel tax people in Richland have seen the value of your track and they're starting to support what we're doing out there. Not done yet, but it's start of the process. Um, we, again, we're using the passion of racing to get this thing done. It is a multi-purpose, um, facility. That is your state of the union, Lacey, come here, join me, we're open to any question that you might have. Um, we need to know what you need more from us or less from us. So Lacey, Eric, we're, we're open to your questions.
And what I might also add, Eric, is that, uh, the funds that generated from your lease are dedicated funds to our park system as well. So that we feel is very important. And, uh, as you become successful, uh, you know, tokens of appreciation, uh, to our parks is always, uh, would be accepted.
Well, I got to tell you that the discussion when we generate money and we're super excited to, to, to share with you that, the Toyota deal, what happened with Toyota?
Well, uh, Toyota came on board with us, uh, as the powered by sponsor at Tri-City Raceway. So that was really awesome, we're going to take those funds and use it just for capital improvements at the event venue. So it's a really good opportunity for us in it, not only promotes the facility in a whole because of the name, it will help generate and bring more, um, capital improvements to the actual facility, so.
And Lacey, that's, that's not just the local Toyota dealer, explain a little bit more of the, the region, the, the, the involvement of, of multiple dealerships.
Um, so this Toyota is, so Toyota has different tiers. Uh, it was brought on by the local Toyota, but it is, um, what's called I N D T A, which is the, uh, group of Toyotas in the northwest region. So they all came together and made sure that they supported us, so.
And that's, that's super important because when you get the power of unity like that with the Toyota dealerships, what could be next?
So I think my point with this is when we go out and generate those dollars, your city, fully functional, this, this group of people over here, uh, I think we challenge them, there's no question. Um, we give them lots of questions answered, they are highly functioning. They, they check us up, they hold us accountable. When we go, when we go generate those kind of monies, they want to know where it's spent. Uh, it's a great conversation and I applaud you guys and gals, excellent effort. Uh, you have a fully functional city staff.
Council, any questions of Eric or Lacey? Councilman Fettow?
I don't have a question, but, um, I invite the rest of council, if you haven't been there yet, to come out for a race, Apple Cup is coming up in a month. Um, it, it's fantastic, I appreciate everything you guys have done, Jesse, the rest of your team, um, fantastic. Those events are well run, they're well organized, the change from the first Fall Classic just to the next Apple Cup, the change in that facility was nothing but miraculous. Um, and then where it's come since, the first time we all walked.
Had to bring that up, didn't you?
Well, but the first time we all walked out there to what it looks like today, um, the fact that no city, no taxpayer dollars have gone in to do this. Again, it's just miraculous, it really is, I appreciate all your efforts, I, I can't wait for Apple Cup. I don't know, I'll be out there on August tenth because frankly, I'll probably melt, but, um, anyway, I am looking forward to, uh, to Apple Cup and Fall Classic, like I said, and we'll see about the August event, the Arca event, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fettow.
Councilman Bloom?
Uh, recently, we just, uh, agreed to participate in the Ironman. And in that discussion, I came back and said, well, next year's race, can we do a lap around the oval? So be prepared that they, they may contact you. Because I think that would, you know, it would be a, a nice, uh, observation point and, you know, so just.
We hope so.
Yes, absolutely.
But I, I will come back and let you know that I was probably one of the first volunteers cutting the trees out there long before you guys got started, remember? So, uh, take care.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you, um, I also, fantastic work that I've seen out there, I have a little bit of asthma issues, so I can't really be out there very much for races and things like that. But I'm wondering if there are any plans in the works, and it's all right if you don't want to say yet or not, um, but are there plans in the works for things like maybe carnivals or something that would also use a massive amount of land that we've got out there? Um, and also be really great for the families in our city?
Um, yes, we've had a few approach us, um, but some of them just weren't quite to par, you know? So we, we definitely are looking into carnivals, concerts, um, it's on the agenda, we're just not quite there yet with the facility, so. But carnivals, yes.
Thank you.
Red Mountain Event Center is, is, they're particular, they just don't take anybody, they want to make sure that they've got a class act that comes to the facility because that is a direct reflection on not only them, but also the city itself. So I applaud them for being very, uh, strict in what they offer. Councilmember Hayes?
I just want to say congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, I've known Eric for a long time and, and Lacey, you guys are doing an amazing job and it brings, brings so much revenue to our region as a whole. And, um, so I just want to say congratulations.
A bunch.
Very good, thank you, Red Mountain Event Center, remember teamwork makes what?
Work.
There you go, all right, thank you, guys, appreciate everything you do. Okay, now we're moving on to, uh, next we have Chief Grego is going to introduce our new code compliance officer, chief.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, council. Tonight I have the pleasure to introduce Rebecca Wood, our, uh, new code compliance officer for the city of West Richland. As you know, this position, uh, was adopted in the address to address our issues within our city as well as alleviate some of the streets. Uh, the stress from animal control and code compliance officer. Uh, ACCO Adamson will be teaching Rebecca through intricacies of code compliance and, and Commander Coats will be overseeing, uh, this position. Rebecca is a Tri-City native, being raised in Richland, Washington. She took a sabbatical to the west side for a few years, but her love for the Tri-City's brought her back, plus I think she wanted to dry off. Um, Rebecca is married, has two boys, one three and one one years old. Uh, Rebecca has been in the healthcare industry for the last twelve years. She was a billing department for a local clinic and she had her fair share of highly satisfied healthcare bill customers, which is, I think, preparing her for this job for code compliance. Um, involvement in the community has been, uh, become something she's expressed a desire, um, to further invest her time in. This has grown, grown exponentially since she has expanded her family and realized how important it is to make sure she's giving back to her community. Uh, we are pleased to have Rebecca as part of the police department and excited to have her, uh, the training completed so we can get her on the street by herself. So without further ado, I will swear her in into her new position.
Can I step right? Oh, I beat it, okay. Repeat after me. I state your name. Hi Rebecca. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. To uphold the city of West Richland municipal codes. To uphold the city of West, West Richland municipal codes. And faithfully and impartially. And faithful and impartially. Perform and discharge. Perform and discharge. The duties of code compliance officer. The duties of code compliance officers. For the city of West Richland. For the city of West Richland. According to the law. According to the law. And the best of my ability. And the best of my ability, thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you so much for the opportunity. Rebecca, you say a few words. Oh, yes, thank you so much for that.
To come and enter and let council introduce themselves to you as well.
Okay, thank you so much for the opportunity, I'm so excited to start and I'm really excited to, an honor to help my community forward, so thank you.
Thank you, chief, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening, which consists of approve the minutes of the regular meeting, February twentieth, twenty, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance oh five twenty-four authorizing the mayor to execute the cascade natural grass franchise agreement. Resolution fourteen twenty-four related to surplus equipment from the police department. Resolution fifteen twenty-four authorizing the mayor to execute a late, uh, inter-local agreement for sewer extension project with Richland School District and Seven H A Family LLC. Resolution seventeen twenty-four amending the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four salary schedule to add a temporary code compliance officer. Motion authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one for the Friends of Red Mountain Event Center lease agreement, the Raceway property. Motion to approve the road right-of-way acquisition procedures and waiver appraisal procedures. Motion to accept the North Sixty-second Avenue overlay and water main replacement project as complete. Motion authorize the mayor to execute engineering services contract for Keene Road Pathway Phase Four project unit with, uh, universal field services. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? I see no one in-house, uh, virtually, if you'd like to speak to the consent agenda, raise your virtual hand or star nine if you buy a phone to be recognized. Stephanie, I see no one virtually, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Very good, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous, thank you, council. This is the first opportunity for citizen public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you would like to provide comments, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to provide your comments and I'll remind you that council is not able to respond to questions during this comment, period. We will, uh, anybody virtual, or excuse me, in-house like to address council this evening for items not on the consent agenda? Name and address for the record, sir?
Yeah, Robert Free, three nine nine seven Hazelwood Drive, West Richland.
At the same time you said your last name?
Free, F R E E.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like the, uh, the council to consider looking at the noise ordinance. Um, we had a lot of problems last summer regarding noise in our neighborhood, normally quiet. I think the big problem with it is that some neighbors won't call in when there's a loud noise and stuff like that. And so when we call, if no one else calls according to the ordinance, uh, the police officers can't do anything about it unless there's two separate calls from different properties. Um, I would ask that the council consider looking at this ordinance and authorizing law enforcement who comes and observes the same noises, um, would be able to take action and go at least knock on the door and ask them to turn down the music. Um, that's all I'd like to ask, so. It's a very detailed ordinance and a lot of people don't even know that it's twenty-four seven, it's not just after ten, so. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else?
Uh, Les Miller, it's Leslie Miller, twenty-seven oh four Timberline, just right close by. I had some concern, uh, and I'm, I'm not sure that, probably not wanting to address this, but, uh, I saw in the paper that there's eighteen to one, uh, vote of no confidence for the police chief. And so I just was wondering if at any point or in time the city is interested in, uh, giving us any more information on just what the heck is going on? Concerns this, and I, I guess, well, my concern is if there is actually some kind of dissension within the police force. I would hate to see that all of a sudden we have a bunch of officers leaving and we leave the city in some way vulnerable as far as protection, so. If you wish to, uh, say anything or if you don't, but I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Anyone else this evening?
My name is David Cole, I live at seventeen ten Ironwood Avenue. Um, I'd like to talk to council about, um, dabbing. Uh, it's, uh, it's an issue because, uh, the city is considering, um, we're currently addressing the issue of a potential pot shop in our, in our city. So I'm just going to read this, if you haven't, if you're not familiar with dabbing, dabs are extracted concentrates, pardon me, a THC, that's a chemical in marijuana that makes users high. And, uh, here's how dabs are made, they take cannabis flowers and they run them through solvents such as butane or ethanol or protein. And then the THC in the plant material dissolves into the solvent. And then the concentrated THC solution is filtered to move most of the solvent and it's dried in a tray. From that, you get a sticky oily substance that looks like beeswax and then dabs are, are, it's really a chemical, they're no longer a plant and they're highly potent, they can contain up to about ninety-nine percent of THC. Dabs are typically heated on a hot surface with the vapors inhaled through a dab rig or, or a dab pen. Now advocates defend dabbing as no worse than smoking pot, but they're lying. Dabbing carries, carries a lot more risk for addiction than smoking. Dab is to marijuana what crack is to cocaine. And its levels of THC aren't regulated or restricted. One dab is like smoking three to five joints at once. In addition to no regulatory oversight, dabbing is growing in use among young people, it's a threat to our children. Um, dab vapor doesn't have the skunky smell that pot normally does, uh, may not even have a scent at all. So kids can do it behind their parents' backs and, uh, behind their teachers' backs. Numerous medical studies, and I'll be bringing more of those here in subsequent meetings, um, show that dabbing can show slow mental development and it can cause depression as well as trigger schizophrenia and these mental illnesses can lead to suicide. Of course dabbing isn't the only high potency, uh, way that marijuana is delivered. Now they're introducing soda, tampons, suppositories and toothpicks, uh, that the pot industry is creating countless ways to get THC into the body through any opening. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Last time I spoke to you, I was, told you how encouraged I was about the, uh, new city survey coming out, thinking about how that was going to be a good way to address in some way, shape or form this, uh, issue that we had with, uh, the question of a pot store here in West Richland. And, uh, then come to find out, that's not the case at all, so I was very disappointed about that. Looked like a missed opportunity to me to get some free information and to fix something that was a problem. I think that, uh, everybody out here will agree that that survey was flawed and, uh, we tried to get that across to you. So anyway, I was disappointed in that with the new city survey, we'll take a look at that and maybe there's a comments section, we'll see. I did want to read something to you, it's just been handed out, um, this came from a website that was developed by a young man's mother. And let me just read this to you. Johnny Stack was born on February seventh of the year two thousand and died by suicide on November twentieth, twenty nineteen, at the age of nineteen. He was an incredibly intelligent, funny, charming, handsome young man, which you can see in his tribute video on the website. We are a normal suburban family and did normal family things. We had a happy life, a four-point-O GPA with a scholarship to college and a family who loved him very much. Unfortunately, we live in Colorado, which was the first state to legalize marijuana in two thousand fourteen, about the same time Washington did, when Johnny was just fourteen years old. Three days before he passed away, he came over to dinner, he lived in our condo a couple of miles down the street and would often pop in for a home-cooked meal. I need to tell you that you were. I need to tell you that you were right, he said to me. This is his mother he's talking to. Right about what? I ask. Right about the marijuana. You told me weed would hurt my brain and it's ruined my mind and my life. You were right all along. I'm sorry and I love you. He died by suicide three days later. Johnny dabbed, and this was coincidence that this other came up. Johnny dabbed for years, starting at age fourteen as a freshman in high school at a party. When I said dabbed just now, did you know what that meant? Not everyone does. Do you understand the difference between smoking cannabis flower and dabbing? High THC concentrates such as wax, oil, shatter or butter, not a typo. Most of my friends look at me blankly when I say these words and say, I've never even heard about this or I have no idea what you're talking about. If you don't know what cannabis concentrates are and you have grandchildren, children, sisters, brothers, nieces and nephews between the ages of fourteen and twenty four. You need to know more about it. Thank you.
What else this evening?
Good evening, council members. My name is Cindy Rents. Live at forty one hundred South Lake Court, West Richland. Uh, I just, I know that council cannot answer any questions tonight and I fully respect that. But if there's any way you can direct staff to maybe answer this question or get an answer to us, I would like to know what the thoughts are when you are going to put the cannabis issue on the ballot. You said it was going to be an advisory. So we have two ballot measures coming up or two votes coming up. One is the August primary and one is the November. So I was trying to find out what your thought is, which one you were aiming for, because there are certain dates that things have to be submitted and I'd like to be prepared. So if you could answer, have staff answer that or get back with me or to the citizens, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Both your staff reports, that is something that can be addressed this evening. Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the virtual audience. Anybody would like to address council in this public comment session? Star nine by phone or raise your virtual hand to be recognized. I see no one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not, no.
And we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, ordinances, resolution, motions of public hearings. As I mentioned, Councilmember Bloom requested that the item be moved from, uh, consent agenda to this number eight item. Uh, so with that, I'll ask, uh, Roscoe, if you'll go ahead and, uh, touch a little bit on your staff report in regards to that.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, uh, what you have before you is a solid waste, uh, plan for Benton County. This plan updates the previous plan. It's, it's dated twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine. Uh, it's six years to a twenty year planning guide. I, I'm pushing. The light's on. Um, geez. This is a requirement. So our state legislatures, uh, require they enacted legislation that requires a comprehensive statewide program for solid and hazardous waste handling. They, they want you to cooperate. So here in Benton County, all the local agencies do a, uh, one single plan. Uh, the other option is for cities to do their own, not really economical. It's going to give you a lot of the same thing. Again, the, the plan is a guide. It's got recommendations in there. The, the plan was put together, so, uh, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is made up of representatives from various cities, you get, uh, waste management, at disposal, other experts in the committee are representative on that committee is, uh, Councilmember Bloom. They're the ones that, uh, spent considerable amount of time last year meeting and updating this plan. So what's before you is, is already been through all the agencies and Benton County is asking us to adopt the plan so that it can be submitted to ecology.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak to this resolution this evening? Seeing no one in the audience virtually, uh, star nine or raise your virtual hand. I see nobody virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve. Resolution sixteen twenty four, adopting the twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine Benton County Solid Waste and Hazardous Waste Plan.
Second.
Second, with that, Councilman Bloom, I'll turn it over to you since you're the requested individual to pull this for discussion.
Well, I, I requested because we are going to be having the discussion or the op, item on the, uh, citizens', uh, survey coming up and talking about recycling. This plan has in, and I'll point out there's a table five three, which talks about the status of recyclables. It is awful. You can't recycle anything. Without it's, it's not, there, there are a lot of people that believe recycling's, oh, it's a great thing. Well, if you want to spend more fuel, spend more money, you can do it. What, what was very disappointing to me, I, I, I've been working on the solid waste plan since two thousand eighteen, I think. But, uh, we, we, we were a few years late in getting it done again. But, um, the, the key goes down to is my, my, the only thing that's reasonably recyclable is fa- fallen out is cardboard, newspaper and pop cans, aluminum, but the market on aluminum cans has fallen out as well. So, uh, keep in mind, yes, boy, you got all this plastic. What, what can do? The best thing we could have done is ship it up to Spokane where they burn it. Uh, but, um, and get the energy back out of it, but just be aware that recycling is not, and, and I've had adamant, the, the former mayor of Cleo, he wanted to recycle glass and I said, you realize what glass is? It's sand. So you're gonna haul glass across the mountains to Seattle, crush it, make it sand, so you can put the sand under a road. There's an awful lot of sand in the world. So, uh, just be aware that, yes, you feel bad about it, but the way to reduce your waste is okay, bring your own cup, use it multiple times. So I bring that up, but, but the other thing I want to bring up is green waste. There is a, there's a discussion in the plan of, uh, and there are movements within the state to require us to compost all of our green waste. We can't send it to the landfills. So they're looking at expanding Richland landfill. We have Richland landfill reasonably close by. You can take your recyclable green waste if you don't compost it yourself and take it to the landfill. So that's why I wanted to pull it from the agenda, have that discussion, especially while people are here. And if they want to come back and make public comment, now they can.
Duck underneath the dais to drink my, uh, water and you'll know why. I've just been ashamed, but. I, I do, I reuse it. I, I rinse them out. Councilmember Hayes? Nope, okay. An old one. All right. Okay, I, uh, see nothing else from council. So with that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Councilman Bloom, for the discussion. Uh, we have no unfinished business this evening or do we have any new business? Uh, so this is the second opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And as a reminder, we have three minutes for your comments. Anyone else this evening in house here? Sir?
Name is Walt Tamasitis. I live in West Richland and I guess I'm shocked to see that executive session topic of, uh, and, and also the article in the paper. I've known the chief since he was back with the troops. And I've also, I've moved, uh, thirteen times in my life and I've helped the police in Wilmington, North Carolina, Hendersonville, Tennessee, and Columbia, South Carolina. And from my observation, Chief Greggo is as good or better than any of them. And the chief wants to have the best, uh, I'll say to make West Richland the best. He wants the force to be recognized as being the best by the community and he has extremely high standards. And I've also been a manager for forty four years and when you move out of a group and become the manager of the group, that's a tough move. And chief went from the troops to the boss, if you will. And that's, that's a tough move for, uh, for anybody. But I just want to say that I am disappointed to see that. I think the chief does an outstanding job. I've been on the cab for a, uh, citizen, the chief's advisory board for several years, under Ben and now under Tom. And I think he's doing an outstanding job and I just wanted the council to know that.
Anyone else this evening in house? Seeing no one, we'll move to the virtual arena. Anybody would like to address council this evening? Star nine or raise your virtual hand to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see one, anyone, no.
We'll go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements, reports and comments. Uh, we will go ahead and, uh, staff, if you have anything this evening? And Eric knows what I'm asking him to respond to. Uh, Mr. Mendenhall?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, council members of the community. First, I'd like to report on, um, on the survey. So that was kicked off the first of the month. Um, we've already received four hundred and sixty eight survey responses as of two o'clock today. Uh, the survey is open, will run through the end of the month and we have sent out emails, postcards, Facebook posts, we're trying every which way we can to get out to the community and make sure that we get, uh, all of their feedback, especially as we head into a budget cycle year. Um, I'll have a full, full report for you, um, on the survey completed and compiled in April. So we'll, we're looking forward to that. Um, so please reach out to your friends and family. Um, let's fill out that survey and get as many responses as we can. The more responses are better and it'll give us better data and, and be able to help, uh, feed the decisions that council will be making here in the near future. Speaking of council decisions, it is known that we are headed out for an advisory vote. Um, and to give you an update on that, um, I've been working with many people on that and it will be most likely the preliminary or the primary, uh, election that will be taking that out. But I'll have more definitive response for, for you and, and the community probably at our next council meeting. But, uh, still ironing out a few details there that's required. There's a lot to it. It's not just a simple throw it on the ballot. So, um, we are working towards that and I think most likely, I'd say eighty percent chance it'll be on the primary. So, but I'll, I'll verify that and have a certain answer for the next meeting.
No other senior staff over there? Okay, we'll move on to council, comments, reports this evening. Councilmember Smart, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, citizens. I, I just wanted to ask a couple of topics. First of all, I wanted to point out that we received, uh, an email, um, from a citizen, um, relating to the survey. Uh, she had just a couple of, uh, comments and questions. And I, so I'll, I'll just mention those because I think they're worth mentioning. Um, she's questioned why demographic information was required in order to submit the survey. She wanted to make sure that citizens, when they, when they say they want, uh, business development, that, that in no way should be interpreted to think that that means a pot shop as a business development. And I, I would like to just affirm that if I were to fill this survey out, I would say, yes, we want business development and in no way would that mean pot shops. And I don't think anybody else on council would interpret it that way either. So I hope that's, um, that's what my understanding is at least. So I wanted to address that since she wasn't here tonight to make this comment. She did send us a letter though, which is really nice. And then, uh, you know, the question about what's keeping somebody from completing the survey more than once? This is a perpetual question. I, I don't, I, I'm not gonna ask Eric to try to tell us why or how that's gonna happen. We went through this last time.
You can give perpetual answer.
A perpetual answer, yeah. You know, maybe, and maybe it's worth bringing back up if you have one. I don't want to put you on the spot, but the, the last thing I wanted to say about this letter is I would really like council to agree to include uh, letters from citizens. You know, especially on the week of a council meeting or something that's a current topic of, of relevance to be included in our council meeting packet report. You know, I, I don't see a reason not to do that. And it just makes it available for everyone else to see and to understand what questions were being asked and, and to be satisfied with the answers that we give. So, um, I know that was an issue when we had a conversation about the, the marijuana ordinance, pot shop ordinance before. Early this time. And I'm not trying to, uh, burden anyone, especially our city clerk, but, but I just don't think it would be that hard and I'd like to, I just want to bring up in a public forum, whether, you know, if there are any council members that agree with that, feel free to, to speak your piece or if you really think it's a bad idea. I'd be interested in that as well, or we can talk privately offline, of course, but this is a council meeting and we should be able to discuss things like this if, if you choose. Similarly, uh, a, another topic I wanted, I wanted to bring up was, um, we've had some housing developments recently that have been, um, put in the, uh, RM six thousand, uh, zoning locations. And, um, in the last couple of years, through some machinations, we've made, managed to put very, um, more high density, I would say, housing in those, uh, zoning. And I wanted to mention to council that, you know, I for one would like us to, um, uh, think about what it might take to discuss, uh, having a conversation about the zoning in the city. So that if we want to have a location where there are, uh, what I would consider fairly high density, um, condominiums or townhouses or multi-story apartments, that we make a zone that will accommodate those so they go where we want them to be, where, where we plan them to be. And not just in a location where previously, to my understanding, we were expecting to have RM six thousand developments, which is maybe homes like you see in Bird Hill. So I, I just want to mention that again in public forum to, you know, if you guys want to talk about that or think about it, maybe we can bring it up at a workshop or something like that. Let's talk about the pros and cons of keeping the, the zoning regulations as they are versus, uh, maybe developing a zoning regulation that, that more accurately reflects the type of housing or development that we want in those areas. So those were the two topics I had. Thank you for the extra time.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes, so I would like to, uh, speak to what Mr. Mendenhall spoke about. So if we're targeting the August primary election for our advisory vote, um, as I understand it, based on some research by a third party, the filing deadline is May third. Is that correct?
I'd have to verify that. I haven't gone into that much of the weeds yet. We're still trying to figure out which one would be most appropriate and then we'll go there.
Understood then, but that if, if we are targeting that, that puts us at six weeks away at this point or maybe eight, a little less than eight. So, um, that gives us three more council meetings before that deadline submission is required. So, and, and I think the council here should be involved in this process as much as possible. So I would certainly like to know what's going on. I'd like to see, uh, an outlined, um, schedule, plans. know what's going on. I'd like to see an outlined schedule, plans, what the text is going to read. As I understand it, the pro and con committee submissions also are due at the same time on that same day by 4:30. So we need to know how that all operates. And so I think we really need to make sure we're organized and we get everything out there so that everyone, both sides can be involved and make sure that it's all taken care of. So if that could be properly addressed, I certainly would appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Bloom?
Well, today I had another exciting day with the Hanford Advisory Board. And and I'm, I will continue as vice chair of the Lids Committee. I remember what a lid was when I was in high school, but that's Land Use Infrastructure Disposal and Safety Committee. But the other, the other piece of the puzzle is that we will be having more public involvement in what's happening at Hanford. And I guess my, my concern or the Lids concern is right now traffic. I know that Richland is looking at changing GW Way to a one-way street. And Jad went to a one-way street. We're not quite sure what that's going to happen to traffic going out to the site. Similarly, the, I know we will eventually be expanding Keene out to Twin Bridges. So if anybody's gone through the roundabout on 240, you'll see the tire tracks over the roundabout a couple of times. But in the mornings, that roundabout is backing traffic up. So there's, you know, a lot of frustration of people trying to get to work on time out there because they will get dinged badly if they don't. So that, that is what, what we're working on right now. So I will ask Roscoe, I want a development plan to map that shows our future roadway out to Twin Bridges, you know, a clean one that I can include in the discussion we're sending.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up again and remind everybody that we are working with Olympia on bringing a veteran cemetery to this region. And so we're still having that meeting on May 22nd from 10 to 12 at the West Richland Police Department. And we invite everybody to come and listen. Olympia will be putting on the presentation. We will be getting some flyers from them that will give more detail of what's going to happen in the meeting, what they're going to be talking about. But I think it's really an exciting thing that's going to be for this whole region, not just West Richland, but for the whole region. I think it's beautiful that they've wanted it to come here and we want them to come here. So we're working hard to make it all come together. So once again, that's May 22nd from 10 to 12 at the West Richland Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Mayor Pro Tim Brink, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. It's always refreshing to see a lot of individuals out here at our meetings. So thank you for taking the time to come. Just a couple announcements. One's a public service one. If you have in the past obtained free COVID tests through the postal service or the federal government, just want to let you know that they're terminating that program as of this Friday. So you can still order tests. COVID is still around. Do it online. They'll deliver them free to your house. But that program's ending on Friday. I just wanted to add a comment with regard to some of the suggestions that Councilmember Smart brought up. Perhaps at a future council meeting or at a workshop might be more appropriate. We could talk about zoning and so forth. Just if there are changes that need to be made to our zoning code. And also if we can talk further about the work involved with including letters from citizens in the packets and so forth. I obviously don't want to create any burden on our staff that is unreasonable. Lastly, next week, I'm traveling to Washington DC. The Association of Washington Cities, not the city of West Richland, is paying for my trip. So that's a good thing. But I'll be in DC Sunday through Thursday. It is the National Congressional Conference that NLC, the National League of Cities, does every year in the springtime. I'll have the opportunity to sit down with Senators Cantwell and Murray, as well as Representative Newhouse, and a couple of representatives from the west side, which are a little bit lower on my priority list. But we will have the opportunity to speak with them. The interesting part is, I was surprised, there are about 60 individuals from the state of Washington elected and appointed public officials going. I am the only one from east of the, east of the Cascades. So kind of interesting. But anyway, I'm looking forward to it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Safe travels to you and represent the whole east side of the state. Well, I'm sure. Okay, council, that's about does it for this evening. We do have an executive session for pursuant of RCW 423110-1F to receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee. The city council will adjourn into executive session for approximately 20 minutes, which will take us to 7:20. We're going to go into executive session at exactly 7 o'clock. So we've just got a couple of minutes to get into the other room. And then we will, there's no action to follow this evening. So thank you all for joining us. We appreciate your presence and wish you back the next go around. So council, if we could, please adjourn. All right. Okay, we're out of executive session right now. And with that, no action as follows. So I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:44. Thank you.